Time is 5:38 and I call the town council work session to order. And duly note, we have a quorum with Mayor Potem Lamont, council members Monger, Sheridan, Wilson, and hopefully via video teleconference will be council member Michael Droce. Public comment is directed to be addressed during the town council regular meeting immediately following this work session. No action is required on said items, but staff direction can be provided. I will now turn the agenda over to Mr. Wade Carroll, acting town manager.
Good evening, mayor and council members. Tonight, we're going to be going over a couple of items coming up for the budget that we would like to cover with the entire council. We discussed several of these objects or several of these topics at our previous budget subcommittee meeting in a lot more detail, a lot more depth than we're going to cover today. But we wanted to make sure that all the council members got to hear this information as well and get some direction from you guys on a couple of items. So today, we're going to be talking about our first portion that Mike is going to be talking about is our revenues, so our estimated revenues for next year's budget. Then we're going to have Haley Archer, our HR manager, is going to be coming up, and she's going to be talking us through our comp and class study. And then we'll be talking through our long-range financial planning tool that Mike Irwin has put together for us. And we'll be able to see what any of these changes that we would like to talk about through this meeting would have on the long-term or the financial impact that it would have on the long-term budget. So with that, I'm going to give it to Mike and let him come forward.
Can you hear us? Mr. Droce? Thumbs up if you can. Okay, great. Excellent.
All right, good. All right, I'm mayor, council. Thank y'all. And as Wade mentioned, these are the items that we'll be covering. And so first to talk about our general fund revenue. We budgeted 7.2 million in property tax, and we just hit about 7.2 actual the last few weeks. We've received more payments since our committee met, and so I was recording that. We're proposing 7.5 million in property tax next year. And there's two parts that go into that. One, we're seeing an increase in the roll. If you look at the spreadsheet, and it shows you that at different stages, what had been the preliminary and what had been certified numbers, and it'll show that we've seen about a 6% increase this year from our supplemental roll. What I did is I looked at this, I mentioned this to the committee, is I took the number I got from the appraisal districts, and I subtracted about 4% from Denton County, just trying to plan for loss of value through the protest period. And we did 5% because of the hotels for Tarrant County, figuring we may lose some value in those also. One other thing that I want to mention here, and as we talk revenue both for us to be aware of, is this year, we have $60 million in new construction. That helps us collect about between $150,000 and $200,000 of additional revenue. And the town has seen that over the past several years. We might have half that next year in new. And then after that, unless we begin to see some new developments, there will not be any more new construction really coming online. And so that big, that extra bucket of money that we've received will possibly see in a couple of years begin to dry up. And that's just something we need to think about as we look to the future. And then the next one is sales tax. And this is a revenue stream that's been going pretty well for us. We've averaged close to 10% growth for the last few years. We're seeing 11% so far this year. We budgeted $1,050,000. I'm estimating we'll collect 1.2. And I'm currently planning to budget 1.2 also. When I looked at the trend on our sales tax, it shows to come in at about $1,270,000 in FY '22. So what I'm doing is I'm leaving about a 5% to 6% cushion on sales tax, just given the volatility of that revenue stream. Couple of questions that have come up is about PD-30, what we can expect out of that, what we could see from there. PD-30, my understanding, has about 60,000 square feet of retail. The typical sales per square foot is somewhere around $300,000, which in a perfect world at 100% would bring to the general fund about $180,000. Now, we don't expect it to be perfect. In fact, I was there at lunch today. I walked around. There's a lot of, there's open space currently. There's also some places getting ready to move in within the next month or two. So I did not just add $150,000 to our sales tax for the next year for PD-30. We'll keep an eye on it. We'll keep watching it. And as we see, we'll make adjustments in that area for sales tax. This is kind of a comparison of '21 and '22. And as you first glance at it, you notice that there's an extra line. It's not the same across. What I've done this year is with the CARES and the Recovery Act money, I thought it'd be best for us to single out grants by themselves and show those, and then show contributions on the other piece. We're looking at about a 3% total growth in our revenue from this year to next year. You can look, property tax, we've talked about license and permits as we continue to slow down there just a little bit because of build-out. Franchise fees will drop just a little bit, just being aware. Part of that was the law on the telecommunications. You used to be able to charge twice almost, and now they're just saying you charge one or charge the other. So that's something we're dealing with. And then grants and contributions, what I want to do going forward is to not budget a grant until we have the paperwork that says we've received the grant. That way, as we're building the budget, we don't say, "Well, we think we're going to get this grant, so let's budget $100,000." And then we come back in November and say, "Well, we didn't get the grant." And so we'll just do it that way. The one grant you see right now is the juvenile detective grant, and the chief sent me the paperwork showing that we'll have it for one more year. And that kind of wraps up a big picture of the general fund revenue. And I'm about to turn it over to Haley for comp study, but if there's any questions... Yes, sir.
On your sales tax, where's the police part of it? And what's SM on the far right? You have city, EDC, SM.
The EDC, we're familiar with, street maintenance is the other piece of it. And when we receive the payment from the state, we receive those three together, and then it's a separate payment for the CCPD amount. And so that's why you don't see it on that spreadsheet. But CCPD should be close to street maintenance since they're both at a quarter.
Any other questions on revenue? Okay. And we did hear from the subcommittee loud and clear about our estimates on the sales tax. And we're going to look really hard at those numbers again. If they can be tweaked at all, we plan on tweaking those numbers. But again, we want to stay fiscally conservative, and we want to make sure that we're getting sales tax numbers from those things that are on the ground and open today, because we just never know exactly when and where those things will open. So if we budget six months' worth of sales tax for a restaurant that doesn't open and is only open for two months out of the year, that was kind of a misstep on our point. And the other side of that really is the sales tax is such a small percentage of our overall revenue stream that really the majority of our revenue stream comes in from property tax. So even if we bump that number up to the ceiling, it's not going to make a big enough difference in our annual budget to really, to warrant the risk, if that makes sense.
Good evening, mayor and council. Nice to see you guys. So we started the class comp study in January. We polled a vendor called Public Sector Personnel Concepts. They've got quite a bit of experience in the DFW area, over 50 cities, that they've conducted projects with, and a lot of those cities have had recurring projects. So they're using them on a regular basis to come back and evaluate their compensation plans. And so what we wanted to do was take a look and make sure that we were sitting in a competitive place to recruit and retain high-quality employees. And so what we did is we started with project planning and communication. We discussed where we kind of wanted to sit, got our strategy of where we wanted our comp plan to be, and then started pulling data. What that included was a salary study of about 10 to 15 cities locally that are comparable in demographic and comparable in geography location. And so they took a look at all of those things. And then they also took a look at what are called position analysis questionnaires. So each individual employee actually filled out a document that provided their job duties, their breakdown of the categories that they were in, so like admin, actual service work, and things like that. And then the supervisors then reviewed those for accuracy and then sent them onto our vendor to make sure that they were being able to evaluate that data correctly in comparison with the salary data that was pulled. So after that, they provided us with their recommendations on where our ranges needed to sit. And the good news was where we're actually paying employees was pretty good. We were within range even when we made some of the adjustments to our proposed comp plan. So we didn't have to do a whole lot of movement. And that, the blue line at the very top is showing you just moving everyone into proposed. So anyone that fell out of those new ranges would just be moved up to minimum. So that's the number you're seeing there is anyone in this increase, this 46, is anyone that just needed to be moved up to that new minimum of that range to make sure they're not below. And so our second scenario that we have here, I did a little bit of a tenure adjustment when we did the public safety changes in February. We did do a little bit of a tenure adjustment to balance out some internal equity and things like that for the comp plan. And so that scenario, the 165, that shows tenure adjustments on top of what is just moving people to propose. So that 46 is included in that 165 from what you're seeing there. And then the third, in the purple, the third scenario, is everything combined for tenure, moving to proposed, and then providing a 2% increase. We've kind of had some discussions about splitting that up, how that would be adjusted, some performance-based merit-related increases for that. We did a look back the last, I believe it was about six years, because we had the COVID year where we didn't have increases. And so we looked back and got kind of an average amount of what we were increasing by in those years. So it was just around 2.5% or so. And so we just kind of balanced that out at 2 to make sure that it's something that we can sustain as well. And so looking at all of those options, it helps put us in a competitive place in the market and make sure that we are able to put ranges out there that are going to attract good candidates for our position, because I think that's where we were struggling to get some candidates in, is because our ranges were low and we weren't actually paying those low...
Sorry for the distraction. I think we're having some weird feedback or...
No, it's a fire alarm panel.
Oh, is that what it is? I keep hearing...
If Michael's phone's not muted, we might be getting a little bit of a feedback loop through his phone.
It's outside.
There's an alarm outside that the mics are picking up. Maybe if we closed the door, that would help? Thank you, Jill.
It's a trouble alarm on the phone.
I'm sorry, you're probably so distracted. I was distracting you.
It's okay.
You're probably like, "What's going on?"
I could hear the beeping, but I didn't know.
I just wanted to blame Droce for something.
Yeah.
Haley, can I interrupt for just one second?
Yeah.
So I kind of want to go back to the beginning for just a minute. When we first started looking at the comp plan, when we worked with the vendor to choose which cities we compared ourselves to, because that's an important part of this process, right? If you're comparing yourselves to the wrong places, then it's really, you're going to get skewed data from the very beginning. And what the vendor had told us was about 80% of what should go into who you are comparing yourself to is location, right? So you are not losing your people to Idaho. You're losing your people to Grapevine, South Lake, Colleyville, Rono, the people that are right next door, right? So 80% of that should be the people in your immediate area. The other 20%, we need to look at things like demographics in the town, population, those types of things are what we really tried to compare ourselves to. So they came up with a really good list of cities. And then once we started looking at the comparison, going from what we did with the DPS salaries, we said, "Okay, what would be best-case scenario? And can we get there?" Was kind of the route that we took. So we said, "Well, what if we were just like DPS salaries?" And we just looked at average. Let's start there and see how things look. And if we're way out, then we need to look at, hey, what's 5% below? What's, you know, 3% below? Something like that. But when it came back, we looked at the average number, and we were actually pretty darn close to the average. And as Haley stated, a lot of our folks, even though they hadn't maybe received anything but a small raise in the last couple of years, they're actually within the market. They were actually within that range of the average, right? The average ranges of those competitors that we wanted to compare ourselves to. So it really gave us a great footing to go forward from there and say, "Okay, what do we need to bring out? Who's below that market? Let's get them up, obviously, to that market range and go," as kind of our jumping-off point. What we found was really, because of the difference in the cities that we compared ourselves to when we did the DPS salaries increase and the staff, the regular staff increase, when we did this study, we did all of it. We didn't just do staff and not DPS. Was that most of the people that we moved up that are in that 46 are actually DPS employees. The majority of them were firefighters and police officers that we found were just barely outside that range again. And we needed to ensure that if we're going to be at the average as we took direction from council, then we wanted to make sure that those folks were in the range first. And then a couple of the staff members were outside the range as well when we looked at job description to job description. And one of the neat things that came out of this study as well is that we actually have a couple of title changes that we needed to make as well, just in order so that we're comparing those apples-to-apple job descriptions, because we might call them one thing, somebody else calls them something, and it makes it very difficult in the future. You know, we paid a good chunk of money to have this company come in here and do this every single year. We don't want to have to do that. What I'd rather do is Haley's more than capable of doing this study now that we have the job descriptions in the right place. Haley's more than capable of getting that done for us from year to year to ensure we stay in the area that council wants us to be for compensation. So I just kind of want to touch on that. And then, again, with the green line, when you move up to 165, as Haley stated, making sure that we didn't cause compression when we moved that 46,000 up, when we moved those police officers, firefighters, and those staff members that were outside the range. We didn't want it to cause compression in the system. We wanted to give some reward for tenure. We did do it a little bit differently than we did DPS salaries in that we counted tenure in position more than we counted tenure outside of Trophy Club. So that was kind of the only major difference between the two.
Question on the tenure?
Yes, sir.
Was it spread across the board, or was it mostly one department? Was it a lot of people, or was it a few people?
We had about six people that needed to be adjusted. And a lot of that came once we kind of balanced out public safety. We only had a few, maybe two or three, that were actual civilian, not sworn. And so it just came from kind of balancing out from where we were in February when we did those adjustments. We just made sure we matched that, because our range had to come up a little bit on our officer position, so it kind of bumped everybody up after that.
We did, the couple of civilian positions that we did have were some higher-level positions, some managers and directors that were well outside of where they needed to be for those range. So that took a decent little bump to make that happen. But now, everybody in every position at this number falls within that average range. And we addressed that compression issue as well.
When we took a look at the public safety one, we did do a full-scope survey too, just to have those positions. And this is helping us move from virtually being at the bottom or close to the bottom of every position to now moving us to the middle and middle, you know, lower top half of that data. So it's helping us obtain a much better position in the market to be able to attract candidates should we need to do that, so.
Haley?
Yes.
Define tenure again.
So tenure, we did it looking at the amount of time a person has held that position title. And so if they started with us, and they've been sitting in that position, and then we bumped them to the new minimum, I bracketed out groups of years, and that's where that look-back of increases has happened to kind of see where we would, where they would be if they stepped forward.
Okay, so tenure doesn't have a specific definition in that, as far as the time goes?
Right. It's just the service.
Is the sworn officer's tenure different than the civilian?
Well, there's just so much more rank.
I don't want to use the word treated differently, but are they rated differently because of tenure, because of the time on a job?
Not time on the job, but when we did the original increase for public safety, right? We looked at tenure not only in Trophy Club, but we looked at their previous job experience tenure as well. So if we had a firefighter, for instance, that had 10 years' experience outside of Trophy Club, and he's got three years in Trophy Club, we looked at that total tenure and where we placed them in the market. When we did the civilian staff, we just looked at their tenure here in Trophy Club, and even really even more so, tenure in position. So if you were, you know, you got moved up from an admin 1 to an admin 2, we looked at how long you've been an admin 2, not just your total experience in the workforce or admin 1 and 2 here in Trophy Club.
Okay, thank you.
The last thing I wanted to clarify is on the 2% increase. What we're looking at that, that's not a 2% across the board. That 2% is a value really for 2% of the total cost of salary increases, right? So it'd be a bucket of money that would be allotted to myself and the rest of the team to develop a plan, to do a mixture of a cost-of-living raise with a merit-based raise on top of. So we'll be looking exactly how that would roll out for each department. The idea would be a gallon of gas costs more today than it did in the years previously, right? So if you have an employee that comes to work every day, does their job, does a great job, right, but just does their job, they meet expectation and they go home, there's nothing wrong with that. We want employees to meet expectation. We set a high bar. We want you to meet expectation. But that's not above meets expectation. So we want you to get some type of reward, but maybe not the same type of reward as our high performers get. So an employee that would come to work every day and meet expectation, we want to hold on to those folks. We want to make sure that they're fairly compensated. We'd give them some type of cost-of-living raise in that bunch. And then we would take the rest of that bucket of money, and we would be able to divide that out by departments, depending on who has the people that are truly excelling and exceeding the expectation when it comes to our evaluation system. Anything else?
Nope, I think I'm good. Is there any other questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Haley.
Thank you, Ms. Haley.
Just to stop here real quick, what we've done is we've put together an actual spreadsheet that shows a capital improvement plan and also the capital equipment replacement plan for all the departments. The top one is just general fund only, and we, the plan is, is for the budget of '22 to reflect that. The bottom one includes all funds, and that would be CIP, that'd be bond money, that'd be Trophy Club park money. We even have included a donation from the MUD on the fire engine in the bottom one in that calculation. But the comment was made a few months ago, council is never being able to see the whole picture. And so that's what we've tried to do with this spreadsheet and use this as we move forward to build our budget and to give us an idea of the whole picture. And once it's approved, the plan would be for us to just put it on the finance website where if anybody wanted to come out and take a look at our dollar estimates for the future, they'd be able to see it.
So Mike, you and I have stared at this a ton, but for those that haven't, would you kind of run down real quickly?
Yeah.
Give an explanation of what each of those lines kind of look like?
Okay.
Not line by line, but...
Okay. Well, I just grabbed like two of the six tables that's on the spreadsheet. We take it by the funding source in the top-left corner, general fund, MUD, Trophy Club park, Parkland dedication money. And then we capture by department the estimated amount that they're planning to spend that year in capital equipment replacement. You notice streets and drainage have been left blank. That will probably be funding from the bond that we've not made a determination on yet, but that'll be part of it, a small part of the discussion at the end of this, and then as we go through the budget process also. But basically, each table just reflects the funding source in the top-left corner, the different years across, and then the departments in showing their requests during this time.
Is there someplace that we can click into and drill down into some of the detail on these? I mean, not like right this second.
Yeah.
See the requests themselves?
Yes, yeah.
I mean, just for instance, police got $175,000 FY '22 and then nothing for the next four years. So what's the 175? I'd be interested in knowing how many vehicles or whatever that is.
Radios. And the chief and I've talked about that. That's kind of above the norm. Most of the police equipment go through the CCPD fund.
Yep.
But in this one situation, the radios would go through the general fund, the capital equipment replacement fund. And on my big spreadsheet, I have the backup that each department sent me detailing what the requests are. And so let me...
Yeah, and I don't need to, I'm not trying to drill, you know, or ask you, quiz you on each one of those items. I just, I picked on the police one because it stood out. But I just don't want to be able to go in and look at what they are.
And we want all of y'all to have that ability. So we'll make sure that you have access to those spreadsheets throughout the time.
Yeah, and we'll go to, just like we currently have the budget interactive, April just got a new project tomorrow morning to get this interactive.
Refresh me on the interactive budget part. You know, I'm not in it all the time, so...
All right. Through open...
You don't have to, you don't have to do that right now. We can do that later.
Okay. All right, yes, all right.
Mike, quick clarification. You mentioned because of police radios, the amount that was dedicated to them exceeded what was in CCPD. So as a general rule, is the police budget from the general fund limited to what's in CCPD?
Most all equipment purchases come through CCPD for the police department. Yes. The police, the CCPD revenue is about $300,000. The chief has two or three training or personnel-type expenditures, and then the rest of it is typically used for the equipment purchases for the police department, instead of those purchases hitting the general fund.
I guess what I was asking, if they had a need above and beyond that, are they limited just to what's there, or does it, or can it go into the general fund?
Yes, sir, just like it's doing this next year.
Yeah, okay.
If there's a need that council votes on, then yes, we can do that with no problem. So, okay. Any other questions before we go forward? All right. All right. If you remember, a few months ago, we were directed to develop a long-range plan, our long-range planning tool for the town. And what you're looking at is you're looking at the main page. You can see it runs out through '26, and it gives you an idea of where we are. And then the next part of this page, on the next one, it gives us the ability to drop in different variables. And so that way, if, in our discussions, if we say, "Well, we want to do X, what will be the impact of that?", then we have the ability to drop it into those variables, do the calculation, and take a look at where that puts us as a town. And that's what we're using. And let me go ahead and bring up the actual spreadsheet. And just to kind of give you, I know it's a bunch, and also realize... And just to, just to kind of give you, I know it's, it's a bunch and also realize I've been staring at it for four months and you're seeing it for the first time, and so I have to remember.
Almost seeing it.
Almost, yeah, that's, that's, no, that's why you have the 11 by 17, is we ran into this previously. Let me, let me adjust that just a little bit on the screen, okay. But if you look up top right now, you'll see that there's no estimated change in property tax. There's no estimated change in salaries for either public safety or your other employees. We don't have the comp study put in place either, nor do we have any plans to add any new public safety personnel. This is just a very baseline picture right now. And, and when you look at that baseline, as you scroll down, it will show the current revenues, current expenditures. We stay in the positive side, which is always the goal of a budget. And if you look down at the red line at the bottom, you'll see that we keep our fund balance fairly healthy. So this is just a snapshot of absolutely nothing happening. And, and I'd be glad to sit down with folks and take a look at it at my desk where it's a little easier to read. And let me see if I can just make it just a little bit larger on the screen up there. So this is just taking a stop. And what it gives us the ability to do is if, as we scroll back up, say that the desire is to do 2% increases for, say, 2% increases for all employees over the next few years. And then other employees' salaries. And then we also drop in the comp study that we took a look at tonight from Haley. Okay. Just by doing that, as we then scroll down and take a look, it, it shows you where our revenues to expenditures go negative and go negative at a considerable amount. We're doing nothing more than if we leave tax revenue the same and just do 2% for our employees and then do the comp plan study. So it tells us that we, what this tells us is we can't do that by itself. And so we have to make choices as we move forward. And, and so now as I get to bring up the bad news piece of it is the discussion of being willing to go 3.5% additional property tax revenue in the future. And that's, and let me just drop that in and kind of give you an idea of the impact of that.
So as you see, that's not going to be a change in the actual tax rate. That's just going to be allowing us to capture up to 3.5% additional revenue. So as we see property values increase, those taxes increase, those values increase, so we're going to receive more in taxes. And that would allow us to capture more revenue each year. The 3.5% is the magic number where we go to the voter approval rate. If you surpass that 3.5%, then we're required to take, to take the increase and the budget to the, to the voters in November, which would, would be unprecedented, honestly. I don't think there's anybody in the state of Texas that has done that yet. Everybody's trying to stay well below that number, or at least at that number, so that we can ensure that we don't, nobody really knows what that, what that looks like, what that procedure looks like yet. And we don't want to be the first one to try it.
But as you can see down, we stay healthy, not as healthy as we were. And we do have a little bit of a delta on revenues to expenditures for a year or two, but that's, that's an amount that we can be worked with. Again, this isn't set in stone in any shape, form, or fashion, but what it is, is it gives us a planning tool to say, we want to do X. If we do that, what are we looking at happening? Or if y'all, if y'all give us a question says, okay, Mike, we want to add some public safety officers. What do we have to, what does that look like for us? Well, then we can take a look at it from, from this perspective also. And it gives us an ability to look somewhat in the future. Any forecast more than three years, you're really kind of guessing year four and five, to be quite honest. But it gives us a planning tool to look at the long-term impact of what could happen to us. And, and the big question that, that we brought to the committee, and I would bring up tonight also, is that willingness to do the 3.5% increase in property tax revenue each year. And as Wade mentioned, some years the tax rate's going to stay the same. Some years the tax rate may drop depending on what the tax rolls done. And there may be other years where the tax rate would go up a little bit. But the idea would be each year we would capture the additional 3.5% revenue in property tax. And, and that, as, as we've talked about it, that and where we want our employees compensated are really the two big drivers as we look at this budget and as we look at moving forward. And hopefully we would get some direction on that from council. The budget finance committee gave us some direction on it, but we also wanted to talk to the other council members about that.
And we say two biggest pieces because it's our number one revenue source and our number one expenditure, right? Salaries are always our number one expenditure. And property tax is our number one revenue source, so those are the areas that we can make the biggest change.
And just to be clear, this 3.5% is a guesstimate of the increase in the evaluation of the property.
That's correct.
It's not a tax rate increase.
That's correct. That is, that is correct. The tax rate would remain the same. But like Mike was saying, on years where, where we've seen a great inflation in the values, we may actually have to go down on the tax rate to stay under the 3.5%, right? And then on years that are, that where the values either went down or stayed the same, we'll either be able to float where we were, or we may have to increase the tax rate slightly to be able to get to that 3.5%. It's really just looking at, are we going to be able to capture the right amount of revenue for the future for, as our costs increase each year for this budget?
Yeah.
Is that why on the, this page right here, the property tax amount just stays flat?
Yes, sir.
The odd years?
Yes, sir, because on, on the, on the base that I showed initially, there was, I was not assuming any change in property tax revenue.
Yeah, so if you, if you think that property, you could plug those numbers in and see the impact.
Yes, yes, sir. And, and one other thing that I mentioned earlier to think about is that new construction that we've had hit the town over the last three, four, or five years or even more. Well, when that stops, then say that 150,000 to 200,000 of additional revenue that we've seen will also stop and will be at a level amount of revenue. And so that may be, that's part of the reason we're trying to get both direction and, and potentially approval to plan going forward to capture the 3.5% increase in the property tax revenue.
And we also understand that this is the reason you have a general fund, right? So we could make it a year without having to change taxes if we thought there was going to be a rebound in the next year, right? So let's say the, the values decrease on us on a year and it looks like we're going to have to raise the, the tax rate in order to capture 3.5%. We could probably eat that a year. And that's why you have a rainy day fund or that, that, that general fund revenue source, right? But if that looks like a trend that we see coming for the next four or five years, then we're going to have to come to you guys and say, all right, we, in order to stay on the same trajectory that, that we chose, you know, back in 2021, then we're going to have to increase our tax rate in order to do that. We hope that day never comes, and I don't really see it coming anytime soon as values will continue to climb in our area.
Or reduce expenses.
Or reduce expenses, that's exactly.
Just throw that away.
No, no, I agree, I agree. And we will, we're looking at leaning out as much as we can on the expense side.
Two questions. One is, do we have, all right, what I'm thinking of is we've got a couple, we've got a recession coming somehow or other. And if you took a, you'd have to go back 15 years and you'd get a couple of them in there.
Yes, sir.
Is, if you did a chart like that, is that going to be skewed because of the number of houses we've added to the neighborhood? Or would that give us a real guideline on what could happen in the next five or six years?
By looking back at a previous recession, is that what you're saying? Uh, it would be skewed, I think, just due to the number of houses.
Okay, so, so that, that line or something along that line would be skewed because the additional houses and the growth of the neighborhoods and stuff like that. So we'd have to start fresh once we get to a build-out situation. Next question is, where in here is the rainy day fund or do we have one or where do we?
When I say rainy day fund, I just.
And whatever the fund is.
If you'll see the beginning balance.
Good luck with that.
Got it.
Right there.
All right.
And that is, and, and the financial policy's about 30% of general fund expenditures. We're, we remain above that in the current scenario we're looking at until about year four and we dropped to 28%. So, and, and that's small enough that, that we can make adjustments. You were talking about recession coming and.
I don't know when and I don't, but I just, that nature is going to say it, we're going to get one sometime.
Yes, yes.
In my lifetime, maybe.
Okay, all right, all right, yeah.
Okay, I don't mean to belay that, though.
No, no, I, I was standing here when that one hit a few years back in another town, so I'm, I'm familiar with that. But that's, that's a tool that we built to be able to, to take a look at estimates in the future. And, and we just wanted to touch on one last thing real quick and then be done is is we're looking at issuing debt. We're looking at doing COs of about 4.5 million at your next council meeting. You'll have the notice of intent. And we're looking at streets, drainage, and parks projects for that, for that 4.5 million, that CO at that point. And, and that will keep our INS rate, INS rate at the 11 cents. And as we're, as we're needing to issue debt, I've been in discussions with our financial advisor that we want to be able to do it on a two-year basis because if we do take over fire functions at some point, it would be best if we can keep it a level tax rate for our citizens. And so if that meant we dropped our INS a couple of pennies so we could keep it level, then that's, that's what we're going to try to plan to do for that. And that wraps this up, and if there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
I just have one property tax question.
Yes, sir.
Do you get data on the percent of the town that's frozen?
Yes, sir.
Sixty-five years, so you know roughly percent, does that stay pretty constant every year or does it?
It tends to, I can't tell you the actual growth each year, but I can tell you the actual numbers we have right now. There's about $358 million in value that falls under the freeze. And because of the freeze, there's a loss of about 290,000 to the general fund and a loss of about 98,000 to the interest and sinking. By the same token, those are the folks who have been paying their taxes for years and years and have contributed to this community and I don't fault.
We have only five years to go, so I'm looking forward to that. And I just, I just wondered, like, is it 20% of the town, 10% of the town? And again, you don't have to answer it right now, I'm just, in my mind, does it, does it run between 20 and 10? Or does it pretty much stay around 10 or 11 or?
It, it grows just a little bit each year, and I'll, I'll get you some more information on that. 358 million and our total is somewhere around, total market value is somewhere around 2.4, 2.5 billion. So just a little over 2.
Thanks.
Okay.
Any other questions on the presentation? So tonight, what we're really looking for from council is some discussion here and some direction if possible. Number one, let's take the easy one first. On the debt issuance, the three topics that we want to issue debt for are the, what we want in that statement for debt is the streets, drainage, and parks. We've got some park systems, our pool is one of those areas where we really need to upgrade that system. That, that pool is about 25 years old, is that right, Tony? The pool is 25 years old, so it's in, it's in need of, we've been refurbishing it through the years, but it's really in need of a makeover. And when you look at the number of pool permits that are pooled every single year, the number of pools and backyards have, have dramatically increased in Trophy Club and especially in Trophy Club. So if you're just looking for a hole in the ground with water, you've got that right outside your back door. So we really need to start looking at more things like the splash pad that we have and be able to offer some things to our residents that they can't get on their own. I think that's the job of the town is to be able to offer those things and, and draw those people out and into the community and really drive that community feel that we all love about Trophy Club. So with the drainage, we all know that we've got drainage problems throughout town. There's, there's, I'm in the middle of a process of identifying all those drainage issues. And then we'll be working with some engineering firms to come up with some plans to put in front of y'all and decide how we want to treat all those drainage issues. So we want to make sure that we can afford that, so we would add that to the debt issuance as well. And then streets, just maintaining our streets and looking forward to a, really a good street survey to be done where they would come in and actually do some coring in our streets and give us a good look at the subsurface. Because the top of these streets, you know, we can drive through town and we can say, yeah, if there's a pothole there, so we probably need to saw that concrete out and fill the pothole. But if, if we truly have a subsurface issue where that street is moving on us, we need to find those things out because we may have to do more than just replace a panel. We may end up having to, to, to schedule that street to be actually replaced at some time. And we can't really do that without a true street study. So that would be part of, of what would be the debt issuance there for streets. And then, of course, the, the dollars to actually do the street projects that we find that, that we need to get done this, over the next several years. So that, that's the first thing that I'd like to discuss with you guys and see if you have any input on those. Do you feel like that's the right direction for us to be taken? Is there any comments?
My, my first thought is in bonds. What determines what goes to the voters and what determines what council can approve? And is there any difference in bonds or they're all the same bonds?
No, there are two different types of bonds that we can get done. There's a CO bond, which council can approve, and there's GO bonds, which would go to the voters. So generally speaking.
Define those CO, GOs.
Well, Mike is going to have to do that for me.
I'm not trying to delay it, but give me some terms.
Certificate of Obligation and General Obligation. Certificate of Obligations can be property tax, but they can also be supported by different revenues of the town. General Obligation, GOs are, that's done by vote of the citizens. The new law that's just passed in Texas is you, on a new town hall or a library, it has to be a GO. But those, my understanding is those are the only two that they've specified have to be a GO vote. That still gives the ability for other infrastructure to be a CO vote.
So in speaking with the budget subcommittee, we looked at some different scenarios of, of the amount of, of bond money that we could take off because we, we have the opportunity here to structure our debt a little differently now as we have some debt rolling off and to stay at that 11 cents. And, and the general consensus with the subcommittee was, you know, we don't want to go out for a huge number of bond dollars without going to our citizens, right? So we wanted to make sure that that, that bond number was, was low enough, that it makes sense for the decision of council to be a CO bond, and that's, those are the things we looked at, those streets, those drainage and the, and the parks. Those are all reasons for good debt issuance that would make sense. That's within the council's purview to issue debt for those things.
Okay, so when you bring it actual, how much it's going to cost and how much it's going to relate into that 11 cents, are you dealing in straight 30-year bonds or are you dealing 20s or?
It'll be a mix, isn't that correct? Is it 20-year?
Yeah, this, the new issuance would be, I think, has been calculated at a 20-year. Yes, sir.
Any other questions related to debt? Are we going in the right direction? Do you guys feel like, feel comfortable with this until next week or until the next council meeting when you actually see the, the bond issuance?
The budget committee.
That's right.
Okay, Councilmember Drossi, go ahead.
Yeah, so I'm having some audio issues here. Is the question that's going to be laid before us here in council in two weeks, the bond issuance for structure items? the bond issuance for structure items? Or is it evaluation of the, we think the 3.5% for value of the home?
It's both. We'll get to that next. But yes, the first question that I pose is the bond issuance. Are you okay with the bond issuance? And again, that will come, the exact language of the bond issuance will come at the next council meeting. But just making sure that we're headed in the right direction on that bond issuance is our first question.
Thank you.
Did that answer both your questions?
Yes.
Okay.
Anyone else?
We're good, okay? So I'm taking silence as I march forward as we are. Okay, so the next question goes right into what Mr. Girasi was asking, and that's that 3.5%. We're not looking for a hard yes, the council's going to vote on this, but I just really want to kind of get some feel from council and see if you are okay after seeing kind of the long-range budget tool and the need for us to be able to capture 3.5, or at least close to that 3.5%, and able to ensure that our levels of service don't have to change within the next three to five years as we develop our strategic plan for the future.
How did, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, or use your, did you want?
No, no, he's good.
Go ahead, thank you.
Okay. How does, each year, council could be different people, and they're all going to vote on it, and which reaction if you plan for 3.5, and all of a sudden, council does a reversal? What does that do to you?
We pivot. That's our job, right? So if council comes up the next year and says, you know what, we talked about 3.5%, we were comfortable at 3.5% last year, we're not comfortable with that anymore, because every year, we're going to be bringing this budget to you. The question that we have is, as we look at the long term, because that's the direction that we've been given from council, is start working on a long-term strategic plan. As we look at a long-term strategic plan, I can't do that unless I understand what revenue source I'm going to have. So for now...
So your 3.5 is strictly a planning tool to look in the future.
That's correct.
As you can.
That's correct.
But that doesn't obligate, nor does it set a precedent for the council, however it's situated next year or the year after.
No, you always have the option each year to vote on the budget, right? So what we hope is that you look back and you see that long-range planning tool, and you understand that we give you a good picture of what's going on each year, and you understand where we need to be in order to keep those services at the same level.
And I would remind you that if you look at the survey, the two top priorities of complaints were taxes and traffic.
That's correct.
So to raise the tax rate, I don't want to say I'm opposed to it right now, you'd have to prove to me that we need it, but I would not be looking at raising the tax rate, and we can certainly guide within the 3.5.
Okay.
That's just my proof.
No, I understand. And the good news is...
I'm not in for what-ifs. I don't care about recessions, none of that stuff.
Right.
Just this year.
And the good news is, we're going to look deeply in that salary, or not in the salary survey, but the citizen survey. And the other thing that they absolutely don't want is a change in service, right? So that's something that we have to take into account as well, is that change in service. As revenues fall, we're going to have to look at those changes that we have to make, right? Whether that's personnel changes, whether that's levels, well, anytime you have a personnel change, you're going to have to have a change in service, right? Because it takes a certain amount of people to provide the service that we create today.
Yeah, and I would just say this, we have to also be realistic. If you want the same level of service with costs going up, you have to pay for it. So it just is what it is. You can't continue to have salaries go up if we want to pay people the salary that's competitive with the market, continue to have costs go up and say, we're not willing to pay for it. Something has to give.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions?
Yeah, I would just say, if you want to stay the number-one safest municipality in Texas, you have to pay for it. So I think it's appropriate to plan the 3.5 going forward, knowing that that could change. But you have to have something to plan from.
That's exactly right.
If you can't plan, I mean...
And lowering it every year, I'll get to, I'll see him, thank you. One second. To get you what Councilman Monger and Wilson stated, you know, if you want to keep our level of service, that what we're used to, what we want, and to keep our employees and attract and retain quality people, you can't keep lowering every year, which is what we've been doing, and now we're going to pay for it essentially. So we do really need to take a hard look and all that, because I don't think our residents really want to decrease in service either. Councilman Girasi, go ahead.
Yeah, I think we're looking at a couple of plans here, Wade. I think when we're looking at the 3.5%, and then if we're doing things that will take away the R, and then if we were to keep the tax rate where it is, where that line is that we have to draw, and then like highlight those areas, the services that we would have pressure on to keep if we're to maintain at our current rate. And I think that's all the kind of part of a strategic plan, just kind of like a Plan A, Plan B, and Plan C. Is that kind of something you guys are looking to put together in the strategic plan? This all needs to rule together into.
Well, to be quite honest, Michael, when I'm looking at this original strategic plan, because we've never had one here in Trophy Club before, so as we put together this original strategic plan, I think the plan is, what is it going to take, the plan should look like, what is it going to take to do what we've heard the citizens tell us through the citizen survey they want done? And that's hold the tax rate the same, right, or as close to the same as possible, and keep the services the same. So we will work on a plan, a strategic plan, and present a strategic plan that does those major priorities, right? Does that answer your question? It may not be an A, B, and C option. I think we'll bring in an A, B, and C option when we come with the budget each year.
Anyone else?
Okay, the last thing, I've just got a few more minutes. The last thing I want to get some direction from is the comp plan. So you guys have seen the numbers now, you understand kind of where we come from, where we would like to sit in the market, and then how much that would cost. So on the comp plan itself, just kind of looking for some direction, any objection to bringing us to the area of the market that we discussed earlier? And then also for the salary increases and trying to be around that 2% overall number for salary increases, using a COLA for those that meet expectations, and the ones that are above expectations, a COLA for everyone, but then rewarding those high performers and using a bell curve system, obviously, to ensure fairness across the scale. Any questions?
I support it.
Okay. Couple of nods.
The only thing I have a problem is with your definition of COLA.
Okay.
Because my social security is not at 2%.
Well, neither would our COLA be.
So it's COLA, but, okay.
Neither would the COLA be.
You would say merit rate, merit in 10 years.
The overall 2%.
And I would totally understand and would go along with it.
Yeah, the overall 2% value number is what I'm looking for. The COLA would be a percentage of that, would be a smaller percentage.
Understand, but that's also a definition of which index you're using.
That's correct. And we look at CPI and backed out the necessary, we looked at about the last three years, right?
I think it's important that we do it.
Yes. Okay.
Anyone else on that?
All right. Well, we thank you very much for your time tonight and for listening to our presentation. I want to thank Mike and Haley, they did an outstanding job. And we'll let you go, and I guess we'll see you again in about 40 minutes.
And thank you all. Thank you for all the hard work for that, and we appreciate the presentation.
Thank you, very much.
Okay, the time is 6:36, and I hereby adjourn our work session meeting.